This board, so currently there is nothing to opt out of, nothing's been adopted. All parents will be notified when that curriculum is approved and they will have the opportunity to review that curriculum in order to decide whether or not they will exercise their opt-out option. And that is, again, when I'm looking here, it says number two, "A family life education program shall be implemented within the school district compliance with state law," what I referenced earlier, and then it says, "A parent guardian who chooses not to have a student participate in the family life education program shall submit such requests in writing to the principal." So again, it can be that form that that organization put together, or it can simply be something that they write on and say, "I opt my child out," sign it and give it to the principal. So either one of those would be fine, but this is the policy that's already been adopted. Any you have any questions about that? I also have him share here, just in case you have questions about the family life curriculum process.
Yes, let me ask you a quick question.
Yep.
Since we don't have the curriculum now, are we prepared for people to start filling those forms off and dropping them off at the principals offices and stuff?
They can still go ahead and fill them out and give them to principals if they want to, or do the signing like I said earlier, but I mean frankly, they can go ahead and do it, but they haven't read their curriculum.
No.
They don't know what they're opting out of, but they're welcome to do it and we'll keep it on file, principal will have it, so when there is something that's adopted, then their child will just be opted out of it. They can still do it ahead of time.
Class right now.
No, we don't even have it.
Right. And when we get the curriculum, it's coming directly from the state?
Correct. It'll be curriculum that we choose, it'll be state approved, but like I think, what is it, Michigan curriculum?
Michigan models, we've had it in the past, we've used it in the past, it was approved, board approved, five years ago, it's a health curriculum that's very appropriate, very parent-friendly, child-friendly.
Absentant-centered still, absentee-based?
Absentant-based, completely all the way through. One of the things, it's been hard to find curriculums right now that are user-friendly from K all the way through twelve, and that's what the state has us to do, but once we have adopted that, I have a family life curriculum committee that we'll meet in a couple of weeks, it'll be presented to the board, and then parents can look at that curriculum and see if they want it or not. It's a good curriculum, it's a health curriculum.
And it's fact-based, we're not talking about...
Yes.
The stuff that's going to be made today, gender, it's...
Not, no.
Okay. Boys, girls, girls?
That's right.
Correct. Yes to the statement, and yes, that is correct. So, but yeah, so when that comes out, everybody will be made aware of that, so I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page there. Secondly, let me give you an update on SRO positions across the county that the board, the finance committee, and county commission approved this past summer. So currently, Drummond Elementary, Austin P. Elementary, Brighton Middle, Crestview Elementary, and Charger Academy are awaiting officers. Now y'all, the finance committee and the county commission have all approved the funding, the funding's there, the funding's actually been there for a couple of months from y'all, y'all approved it a couple of months ago, they are just in the hiring process, so they're still trying to find people to fill those. However, the sheriff and chiefs, like I said, are still interviewing candidates, and we hope to have those openings filled soon, but in the meantime, law enforcement in each of these areas has increased their routine patrol presence at each of those campuses. So, you know, in doing that, even, I know that, of course, remember, Austin P., I keep wanting to say university some days, Austin P. Elementary and Drummond Elementary School are on the outskirts, so those will be covered by the sheriff's department, and then Crestview Elementary, Charger Academy would both be covered by Covington PD, and of course Brighton Middle would be covered by Brighton PD. So they're in the process of interviewing folks to fill all those, and I know Glenn's here too, so if we have...
He was here, he weighed on it.
Oh, there you go. Time to turn me off. So, yeah, so Glenn's here, and actually, he has been spending some time at Drummond Elementary for us, since, you know, it's so far out, so he's been hanging out there for us to do that, but we expect those to be filled soon, I mean, the money's there, it's just their hiring process, they're just, you know, getting somebody in there. So, my understanding is, we're having a hard time across the state with law enforcement candidates and teacher candidates. Those are the two big areas that we have gaps in, so, but hopefully we'll have someone real soon. Any questions about that? And so far, it's been, had some real good feedback from parents and teachers and students there at those schools, you have some good SROs already. And then lastly, before I turn this over to everyone's favorite, Hunter, he always has all the good news to share. Lastly, before Hunter comes up, I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the love, commitment, and support our outgoing board members have shown to me and to this community. You sat in these seats during a highly volatile time, and I for one appreciate your willingness to persevere. So if there is anything I can do for any of you, please do not hesitate to reach out. I appreciate your leadership, and I want to say God bless each one of you, so thank you for what you've done. Any questions for me before I part? All right, y'all, thank you. Mr. Hunter, you have a picture on that?
He does.
Go to that last one.
I didn't have as much pretty stuff to show this time.
Okay.
Good evening, guys. So the, it's been a busy month, to say the least, just trying to make the transition from the just being able to come in and show you all the pretty stuff, such as turf fields and all that good stuff, and taking over as the maintenance supervisor and digging into the tradition of how we need to continue to fix our schools. So, we're digging into the heart of it now, now we've got roofs and we've got ACs sitting on the ground at Brighton, and we look to start installing, we've got a few more that we want to get, I want to be able to cough the cranes, want to make them minimize the mobilization as far as those, so they can go, you know, take care of school with one, one mobilization than wasting the resources. So, that's supposed to be kicking off in preparation, we're going to start public tech at the high school, we're going to go with Charger Academy, a couple that we have there, and the south end of the county will receive the majority of the remainder, so Monford and Brighton, you guys have got a lot of RTUs coming y'all's way. As far as the projects, the LED lighting, it's obviously been the big hot topic. There in Covington High School, as we speak, I just got a picture about thirty minutes ago of the light tower going up, I have been assured that we're going to play football all night under the lights, so I'm going to roll with these guys, the project form that's on site, he has definitely gone above and beyond, hit what he's got control of, but the lights are here, they are going up, right now it's kind of a plug, just to attach and stick up, the hard, all the hard work pretty much behind us as far as that goes. Then we'll move them off back to Brighton and we should, just hoping to have them up for now, but I'm expecting them up by the end of the summer week on football statements, and then they're going to come back in September and finish up the spring sports, so that's the update on the LED lighting. We've got a bit out, it's in, actually in the process of being bid for the Covington High School, that project is, looking forward to coming to fruition soon. Brighton is still undecided as far as some of their greenhouse needs, but they do have specifications, they're looking to start putting something out to bid for it very soon. Hopefully, we'll get something in the paper this coming, get something to the paper by Monday so they can run a bid this coming week. The tracks, the two that we have left, Monford and Covington, they are going to schedule those during an off week, it's a seven to ten day process for those, so I am looking forward to those happening during football season, but not during a home game during the week that, if they have a home game on Friday, say they play on Friday night, their plan is to mobilize and be ready to execute Saturday morning to push through, so they don't conflict with any of our, with our home games, so.
Where would that fence go up around to protect that track?
Well, once we get, well, once we get the, the tracks down, to be able to exactly determine, I know we can get very close right now as far as getting it firm, we do have a couple decisions to make on Covington's location, on where we'll terminate the fence, as well as Monford, we have two questions that we've got to give to staff, but to answer that question, as soon as they go up, we will be putting those out to bid. Brighton is actually, we've met with the company, we've got a, that's, I think Jeff was putting that in the paper next week.
So we didn't do anything in the meantime to keep those tracks protected?
Well, the one at Covington and Monford, no, essentially just like a blacktop road as far as the conditions that they were worried about, the reason we had to mill those is because the blacktop itself just was not suitable as far as the cracks, it wasn't really the certain, Brighton had one structural crack in it that they repaired, but they do all their prep whenever they show up as far as those two. Now Brighton, yes, we'll, we'll put some temporary fencing up around that one, they've got some nice temporary fencing down there now.
Yeah.
That we're going to utilize during, during their home game. But we do plan to get that one up during season, they think that they can get everything coming in, again during an off week and execute, might have to do one half one week and then come back on and finish the remainder, so. But as far as the, all the pretty projects, we will have more come, they're on hold at the time. Bathrooms have been much, like I said, they've been much appreciated, the maintenance guys have very much appreciated not having as much roof leaks and bathroom calls on that end of, that end of the county for that most. We're still trying to figure out exactly what a maintenance department is, is are we, you know, two man or truck, or UPS or maintenance, but we'll figure all that out. But the, but we will have more to discuss in the future as far as maintenance projects and what we need to do to continue improving the schools that need, need some help, so.
It seemed like everything ran, I don't know if I scheduled that.
With the restrooms and with the roofs, yes sir, so they have, everything's gone pretty smooth, we've had some hiccups, but I mean, we've had some contractors that definitely stood up to the plate and took care of us in those times. We had logistical challenges, as well, but it was kept, you know, kept under the radar for the most part, and they just, they just trusted, and they did, they executed, so.
I think the thing, the only thing we really had an issue with was the lighting.
That's it.
I mean, the lighting for the football fields was supposed to be done in May, and they ran into, you know, supply issues and all that kind of stuff, and so that's, you know, that was already supposed to be done, we're supposed to be talking about the lighting on the other field right now.
Right.
But all the other stuff, man, it was done, it was pretty good. I will say this, just because it's funny, but I spread all the supervisors out on the first day, so the second and the eighth, the half day and the full day, each one of our supervisors was at a location, right, greeting parents and kids and all that kind of stuff, and I was at Monford Elementary School, and I was walking down the hallways after everybody gotten off the bus, I was walking down the hallway, and this second grader comes flying out of the bathroom, this young man comes flying out of the bathroom, and he said, "Hey", he turned around, looked at me, he said, "Have you seen those bathrooms?" I said, "Yes, sir, what do you think?" He said, "Men, they're awesome." And then he just took off back into his classroom, so you know, when you get the appreciation from a second grader, I'm good, man, I'm good.
That's what he's usually doing.
That's right, that's right.
Guys, do you have any questions for me?
Alluding to the bridge and process.
I spoke to Coach Cruz, and he was going to, he, we sent a maintenance guy with one of our guys that works at the Brighton area, stopped by Baskin's to discuss some opportunities with them, they were going to go back with some budgets, was, you know, I think they may have discussed some kind of one in the back that they could go ahead and cut the axles and stuff off and work out some kind of deal, but I left that, I did speak with Coach Cruz, and he was going to reach out to them about that, but I'll follow up with him on that, on that meeting, because I do know that they're, that's how they're going to enter the game field, so. Coming out of the backside of the field house, correct.
Like Tom, you kind of touched on when it would be in the calendar last meeting, is it still this month?
Well, we're September, you know, it's really, it was all contingent on getting that trailer, we've had a hard time finding that trailer, to lop everything off of it.
And Mr. Shipley, I mean, not, not to, but as far as the areas of focus that I've been having to focus on as far, other than just the bridge, Brighton, because it is a void, but I have leaned on Cruz to take kind of some of the lead and, and finds you a trailer and we'll get, we'll work on getting this thing installed for you, so I'll follow up with him tomorrow and see exactly, you know, has he located.
Because we can weld all the...
I'm working the same, I understand, I understand, I'll follow up with him and see where we stay.
You're ahead of our maintenance.
Yes.
I will say, he did have some areas that he was, that he said that he had on the front end that he had, and so that's why we're relying on him, because he said he had some contacts, and so, you know, there's that too, but now, we'll be able to put the rails on it, paint it, we're going to do all that, we can do all that in-house.
Sure. But adding railing, even the railing would come with a lead tank.
Right.
I mean, you know, the, it'd be nice to think that we could use our, the new welders that we've just purchased for our welding shop to possibly have a project, I think that would be a nice educational time instead of subbing it out.
Right.
And so those are the details that we'll, fortunately, we'll get some temporary up in the meantime.
Ben, one thing we did with the other bridge we had, we didn't make it a wide bridge, that way it would help us a lot.
Correct.
If something...
I would think that if we go with the steel trailer route, it should be able to handle any, any load that it's going to get.
Right.
I mean, it's, it'd be one of those haul freight, so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Bennett? Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, and I'll be back with you tomorrow, I want to find out about that trailer.
Thanks. Dr. Burden, Director of Instruction, report.
I just have a couple of things tonight, first I want to talk about math textbook adoption, we will undergo math adoption this year, and in front of you, I have provided you a draft textbook adoption process, looks like this, and it's stamped draft across, across it, and this is just a summary of the steps that we will follow this year as we look at math textbooks. There is a section on page two that discusses some of the changes, I know that Dr. Tom has mentioned that to you before in the last few months, that we are looking to change that process a little bit, and that's just some procedural changes that will not require a policy change, but that's on page two where it says changes for twenty-two, twenty-three. The timeline that you see is based on previous year's processes, the state has not put out all of these dates yet, so these are subject to change, but it's pretty accurate, some of them I know will not change because they're internal dates, but some of the ones we may have to tweak a little bit once the state puts their, puts their timeline out, and I'm checking the site every few days, anticipating that it should be very soon. We will discuss this draft in the coming days with principals and make adjustments, which is why I stamped it as draft, because the principals may have some different ideas that they would like for us to consider, but this is, for now, this is what we plan to use as far as textbook adoption. Also in your packet is a draft of an annual agenda for the board, looks like this, that we would like to post if it's the will of the board, for the public to see an overview of the items that will be discussed at each meeting for the year. This agenda, as you can see, it doesn't include routine items like budget amendments, policy revisions, and some of those things that we do pretty much each month, but these are some bigger topics that we will discuss as the, as the year progresses, and if the board approves, then we will post this annual agenda in the coming days on the website, so that would just be something for you all to discuss, and then we would need a motion to post that.
Would anyone entertain a motion to approve the annual agenda?
May I ask a question first?
Well, let's do this, we have a motion by Mr. Shipley, a second by Mr. Benson.
Sure.
All right, now a question.
All right, did, I'm looking at the meeting date here, did we change that, we got November tenth, did we change that to November third?
Possibly, I may have it wrong, I will make that change, is it November?
Oh, because of TSA.
Okay. Thank you, I'll make that adjustment.
When it goes to Dr. Burden.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions about it? Those in favor, I?
Aye.
Those, those motion passed.
And then the last thing I have, Melissa Chipman, who's our Chief Instructional Technology Officer, she is going to come up and speak for you, speak with you just a few minutes on internet safety measures, and that is required by Board Policy four point four oh six, and following her presentation, Mr. Chairman, that will conclude my report unless somebody has a question for me.
We have a lot of pictures.
We have a few openings, Ms. Bennett?
We have a few positions open, probably less than, maybe around seven or less.
That's getting pretty close though, isn't it?
Explosion.
A lot closer than we were, right?
Yes, sir.
I think, and in some areas, we don't even have any candidates to interview, do we?
No.
Like Spanish?
There's some hard to...
Very creative there.
Yeah. That we're working on, we've got a few left. Any other questions for me before Ms. Chipman comes?
Thank you, Dr. Burden. Ms. Melissa Chipman.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I am here to discuss our internet safety measures. This year, we are doing internet compliance training to all the teachers as part of their compliance package, where we're going out into the schools and talking to everyone about what we're doing. We have our content filters in place, we use Content Keeper monitors, all of our internet traffic that the students are using going in and out. We have Aristotle K-12, which is a classroom management application that also has a built-in content filter that monitors the sites, allows our teachers to control what sites the students are on while they're in their classrooms, they can push out the particular site they want them on, or, and see what, exactly what sites they are accessing while they're there. Like I said, we've provided compliance training to the teachers at the beginning, we're in the process of doing that now, and I've got a couple more schools to visit to stress the importance of the internet safety for the students, you know, we've given them these devices, but we want to keep them safe while they're using them. The teachers have also been directed to teach at least one internet safety lesson in their classrooms, so that they can, so that we will meet our CIPA, which is the Children's Internet Protection Act, Compliance E, that's part of ERAE, so we are having them do one lesson, and we even provided curriculum and a sample lesson for them to pattern file or actually use that lesson if they so choose, you know, we gave them several options. This year, we have the acceptable use policy for the teachers and students, and we have a new teacher technology handbook to go along with the student handbook, which outlines a lot of our practices as well, and they all have to sign that they have read and will abide by those policies. Anyone have any questions for me regarding internet safety measures?
Angela was bragging on that earlier today, she had some kids come into her room, she blocked a bunch of slides, and a couple of them said, "All right, I can't get on to it."
Very good. Look, y'all, if you need anything, Kevin and I are always available, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chipman, thank you. Mr. James Fields, Director of Boxing, report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Benson asked me earlier how my first week was going, I appreciate that, so I was at a school, I was at Brighton High School this morning, had a meeting at eight, and I started by saying, "Good afternoon." Had a meeting at Covington High at two o'clock, and I started by saying, "Good morning." That's kind of how it's going. Just wanted to inform you of a couple of things, we had a wonderful presenter on discipline strategies, July the twentieth, late, late July, if you can remember my last presentation, that's one of the things that we want to, we want to decrease referrals to ALC and to Core School this year, so we're really working on that. You know, he talked about program structure, consistency, and the one thing I liked is don't be a bouncer, bouncer for the teachers, and he was talking, talking to the principals. You know, a lot of times, the principal's just walking down the hall or doing something, and he'll stick his head, or she'll stick her head in the teacher's classroom, and then she'll start getting on the student, saying, "Now, the principal's, the principal is here now, so continue, continue doing what you were doing." So the principal, the principal just becomes a bouncer for that teacher, so you know, the key was to empower the teachers, empower your admin, your assistant principals. Your job is, when that student gets to you, the decision is already made, so don't work yourself to death and be burnt out by Labor Day. But he did a great job, got a lot of feedback, a lot of the principals said this is the best presentation that they've seen on discipline in a while, so we're proud about that.
Is that by the administrator?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We had a great luncheon at the beginning of the year at Brighton High School, I'd like to thank Mr. Crowson for his hospitality, the teachers had our opportunity to fellowship, free hot dogs, free hamburgers, I think we cooked about thirteen burgers and dogs, so we tried to get them motivated at the beginning of the year, next year we maybe want to add a little bit to that, if Dr. Tom's allowed it, it's a great thing. Fifty-seven, we have fifty-seven out of district students thus far, we had forty-eight last year, and we had seventeen the first year, so it's growing and growing every year. I really believe we'll probably top out at sixty-five or seventy before the year. We've enrolled ten thousand one hundred and seventy-two kids so far, and that number's growing every day. We have approximately sixty-eight pre-K that haven't registered yet.
They don't know what we're talking about?
We have, we have about sixty-eight pre-K that haven't registered yet, did you want the number?
No, no, I got it, ten thousand.
And there will be tens and tens of students to enroll after Labor Day, I think that's when they think school starts after Labor Day.
Do you have our number from last?
I'd say it used to be that way.
Do you, do you have a number we ended our enrollment with last year?
Ten, two, forty, I think.
Okay, so we're really close then.
Oh, yeah, we're near there. SACC currently have two hundred and thirty-six children attended, it's a one to ten ratio, and we only have twenty-four workers in the district. There are a hundred and nine kids on the waiting list, so we're looking for eleven workers, eleven workers are needed. You know, Dr. Tom, if we put stuff out on social media, if we have signs... we have signs up, word of mouth, Facebook, the whole nine. But you know, it's tough when you ride past KFC and McDonald's and they're starting at fourteen dollars an hour. And we don't pay that, so. But we're trying. Transportation. We're still, we're still twenty drivers short. We started at twenty-five drivers short. However, we're still down from last year. We now have a state-approved tester and a testing course that helps a lot. We've been training drivers daily. Multiple drivers are driving double routes. And we have six mechanics driving. So everybody, I mean, everybody's pulling their load. Two positions still, still need to be filled for our mechanics. Project SE will require twenty drivers, but those routes will pick up around five-thirty, five-forty-five, and they'll start after Labor Day. We've ordered five new transits and three special education transits. So I, you know, I would like to commend Charlie and Will. They've been doing an excellent job with, with the resources they have. School nutrition. We still need workers. But things are, according to Ms. Prater, things aren't running smoothly. Most days, Ms. Matthews, she works in one of the cafeterias to cover, you know, to cover as a sub. The report I got today at Drummond Elementary, I think she had four hours of COVID. So she's down there working, serving the kids. She just jumps right in there. So that speaks volumes for her, you know, what she's doing in that program. Any questions?
Mr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
This is a little far reach, but as you were talking about our need for mechanics. Eighteen-year-old students in conjunction with some of their VOTEC classes. Could we entertain, or is that a possibility?
You give me a chance to teach, I would say.
Some of those children know a lot about all of mechanics. What I said, say, children, young men and women.
That could be something we'll check into.
Well, it's true. Especially for Mr. Clark and I, for, for a time. Oh, we want to be a mechanic.
Y'all know, we, we, we. I'll be piling up in front of my truck.
I also want to piggyback on what Dr. Combs said earlier. We appreciate the work that the child's done. People that are leading the committee. I've worked with Mr. Grant. You don't even know that when I was at Crestview Middle, I took some of your examples to get off target, on the target list. So you're talking about a man of the rip, and he, he knows what he's doing. But anyway, God bless you. And again, if I could ever help you in the call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Yes, sir. Mr. Brad Carter.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
People want to thank the people leaving the board for y'all's service. I really appreciate it. I'm going back a mile away from most of y'all. I go back a mile away, walk everybody home. I'm here today. We have a utility software. It sort of mimics our maintenance software. They used to call it SchoolDude, but the name has now changed to Brightly Software. Anyway, the old SchoolDude software is going away. And this is going to be the replacement. And they have offered me a deal if I would sign a three-year contract. First year is actually less than last year of SchoolDude. So it's fifty-seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. So we do have an out clause for the last two years if it's not funded. So I'm, I'm here tonight to ask you to, you know, the board would give us approval to sign a multi-year contract with Brightly Software for the utility program.
What was that cost again?
Five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Did you say a three-year contract?
Yeah, that was, that would be for the first year. But it is for two additional years. We can opt out of it. If I do not like what it's okay with.
Have you got it demoed?
I have not demoed it per se. But I, you know, I've read through the, the email and stuff, the literature that they sent. I do like what it does. Obviously, you know, they have upsides on this. But one of the upsides is you can almost read your utility bill in real-time data. And when you can start doing that, you can start cutting kilowatt demand. If you cut kilowatt demand, you can really lower your utility bill. I don't know if I have your utility bill. I had the highest one I've ever had. I got, I went, that's pretty good. I told my wife, my mother, I would like to go space and work in the day or something. That's how we're going to tag it in my house.
I'm not hoping I'm listening.
They all listen. But anyway, we have, we had to have board approval to do a, a, a three-year contract. I do like it because it does have an opt-out clause. So-called funds aren't there if we do it. So I, I would like to go ahead and, and see what they got this first year. And if it's advantageous to us, we can use it to save money on utilities. And we'll continue the relationship. Whether or not, we'll try to find something else.
I'll make a motion that effect, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion about, Mr. Benson, second about Ms. Clark. All right. Are there any questions, Mr. Earl? Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. So that is part of, that's the line item in the budget. There's nothing changed.
We've already budgeted for that.
Sure.
We have, we have that each and every year.
I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify about that.
No, no, you're right. That's a good ask.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, no, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Mr. Billy Darrell, Financial Report.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for following the internal report. All right, financial report for the first one for the year here. If you flip over, I kept the color coded from last year. Green is for the general purpose school budget, one forty-one. Highlighted in yellow at the top are the revenues and at the bottom the expenditures. Of course, not a lot of activity yet because school didn't get started till August. So still there. Same thing with the one forty-two federal projects. Obviously, you see no revenue there yet because we're still carrying over all those funds from federal projects and bringing them into the new year. I anticipate seeing you at the September meeting, no later than the October meeting, our usual increase in federal funding products that we'll be bringing in. So right now, the budget's six point nine million, but I anticipate it's going to be way more than that. We closed the year, just over, just under thirty-five billion last year. And then on the back foot, since cafeteria, repeat fund again. Of course, limited numbers here. There was some summer fee that took place. And those are the numbers that you're seeing there on the revenues and the expenditures. The one thing that I do want to discuss with you, I talked to you last meeting, we're going to be bringing back the one seventy-seven. Because of the supply chain issues, we weren't able to close that account of projects budget. Still got a couple outstanding purchase orders. And we'll be bringing a remaining request for, for fund balance to close that account at some point during the year as well. Mr. Chairman, that's the financial report.
Do we have a motion to approve the financial report as presented? Motion by Mr. Isabel, second about Ms. Clark. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, no. Thank you, Mr. Billy.
Yes, sir. I got one, Mr. Chairman. These are some school support organizations. It's that time of the year again for their annual renewals for the board approval. And I have five of them this evening. And I just wanted real quick to show you all. The website's got a great place for school support. So if you could ask a question, if you go to the webpage for schools, go to About Us, there's a school support organization tab. And it has every resource you need to know. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Cullen. We had the comptroller came to town last month and provided free training for all of our school support organizations and school administrators on how to properly do school support organizations. Mr. Cullen filmed it and has put it on the website. So there's a two-hour presentation. If you want to go watch it, it's a great presentation. But then all of the forms that you need are there. With that said, we have the CIAA PTO and the CIAA Arts Booster. And I know it's Charger Academy now, but their business license is still under CIAA. So it's going to take a year to get that changed. The CHS Gridiron, the CHS FFA, and the Muffin Elementary PTO are the five that I have this, tonight to ask you all for approval that have met the requirements for the annual renewal. And if you all, when you get that in the motion, I'll bring the rest of them as I get them next month.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Shipley, second by Ms. Proctor. Are there any questions back? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, no. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good, good report. Well, as Dr. Combs said earlier, Mr. Clark, Mr. Shipley, Ms. Proctor, and Ms. Isabel, we want to thank each of, on behalf of the board, we want to thank each of y'all for serving, y'all serving the board well. You've been in attendance all, all the way. You've always voted for the children. I say that. And I've enjoyed working with each one of you. And we're going to miss y'all. And you've really done a, a great job. And we look forward to seeing you around. And I know y'all will be still involved with the school some way or another. At the next year's service, I hope you all. Ms. Ms. Proctor, you want to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Combs, Chairman, Ms. Crowson, board members, staff, and visitors. I just want to thank each one of y'all for the acceptance and the kindness all of y'all have shown me. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I will still be working. I've worked with the school systems since my son started school in like fifty-eight. At one time, I was working at three fifty-eights. I saw what was happening with school. My oldest son, everything he saw, he didn't want to know what it was. Well, the saddle was laid by, quiet, never seen anybody. But they, they started comparing them. Why didn't you like Big Brother? Why didn't you get something? So I put, walked up the oldest one in Drummond, the middle one went to Muffin, and the youngest one to Gilbert. Everybody said, you're crazy, you're crazy. If I thought, what I was told I was crazy one time, it was probably me. And I said, well, what's your problem? Anyway, I knew what was best for my children. But anyway, I will still be working in the school system. And Drummond, if all the communities and all the schools, the parents of schools were as active as the Drummond community, Drummond school, no school would be needing anyone, I'm telling you. Those parents and the community, we've got two churches that provide for Drummond School that besides the parents. And this, it's unreal, I'm telling you. And I would, I've talked to the parents several times and said, we don't need anybody. All we want is those benches. Because I don't know, you know, a couple of years ago, eighteen and T, I'm president of eighteen and T in the counties. In the airport, I'm here for meetings. And this was a state project, saving hardtop plastic. That was like mayonnaise, peanut butter, any hardtop plastic. It takes six hundred pounds to make a bench, because a bench weighs about five hundred pounds. We take them to Evansville, Indiana, and melt them down and make benches out of them. Well, the last, first one I got, I gave to Mathis Schlepp Show. Because eighteen and T westerns, these terms, we sponsor a camp every year for adult cancer biology cancer patients. First one I gave to them. In January, the next meeting, they went, no, anybody else wanted more benches. I said, I'd go. Well, what do you want some benches? I said, I want to come and see. So we got some money there. I said, okay. So he said, well, get some children involved. So I went up to school and talked to them and asked, oh, yes, oh, yes. I said, now that class that brings the most in, I'll give you a pizza parlor. Well, it happened to be a first grader that brought the most in. And that, we, I gave them a pizza parlor. But anyway, when I went to camp, I told them, and they, I had a little plastic grocery bag. And I, I need y'all's help.